I'd like to call to order this regular meeting of the Lincoln Lancaster County Planning Commission of January 5th, 2022. A printed agenda is available outside the hearing room, and a copy of the full agenda, including the staff reports, is available at the front of the chambers with the clerk. The Open Meetings Act is posted just inside the doors at the back of the room. If you parked in the parking garage across the street to the north, the gate is open and no parking coupons are needed. Out of courtesy for those attending this meeting, commissioners and the staff, cellular phone usage is not permitted in these chambers during any portion of this meeting. We appreciate your cooperation. The Planning Commission action today is final on the following items: 1.2, Special Permit 1-8-0-0-3B; 1.3, Special Permit 2-1-0-4-9; 1.4, Special Permit 2-1-0-5-2; 1.5, Special Permit 2-1-0-5-5; 4.2, Special Permit 2-1-0-5-3; and 5.1C, Special Permit 2-1-0-5-0. Any aggrieved person may appeal final action of the Planning Commission to the City Council or the County Board by filing a notice of appeal with the clerk within 14 days following the action of the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission action on all other items is a recommendation to the City Council or County Board. The first item of business is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting held December 15th, 2021.
So move, Campbell.
Second, Joy.
Shelley?
Campbell?
Yes.
Cruz?
Erkhor?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Rodenberg?
Yes.
Ryman Yost?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Minister approved, 7 to 0.
Thank you. The next item of business is the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda will be called at the same time and will not be scheduled for a separate public hearing unless there is a request from someone wishing to speak or at the request of a commission member. I will ask Shelley to read all the consent agenda items into the record. Once those items are read, she will ask if there is anyone wishing to speak. If you wish to speak on an item on the consent agenda, we would ask that you stand and state that item. That item will then be removed from the consent agenda and scheduled as a separate public hearing under Section 3 of today's agenda. All items remaining on the consent agenda will be voted upon in total with a motion for approval. Shelley, will you please call the items on the consent agenda?
Yes. Item 1.1A, Comprehensive Plan Amendment 2-1-0-0-3, to amend the Lincoln Lancaster County 2050 Comprehensive Plan to revise the future land use map from industrial to commercial on approximately 5.6 acres on property generally located southeast of North 14th Street and Corner Husker Highway at 1555 Yolanda Avenue and 1445 and 1525 Corner Husker Highway, associated with Item 1.1B, Change of Zone 2-1-0-5-2, from I-1 to H-3 on property generally located at 1555 Yolanda Avenue and 1445 and 1525 Corner Husker Highway. Item 1.12, Special Permit 18-0-0-3B, to allow for the sale of alcohol for consumption on the premises on property generally located at 150 Southwest 14th Place. This is final action. Item 1.13, Special Permit 2-1-0-4-9, to allow for soil mining excavation on property generally located at North 70th Street and Arbor Road. Final action on this item. Item 1.14, Special Permit 2-1-0-5-2, to allow for increased height of a flagpole to 130 feet on property generally located at 6340 Arbor Road, and this is final action. And Item 1.5, Special Permit 2-1-0-5-5, to allow for the sale of alcohol for consumption at the premises on property generally located at 2645 O Street. Also, final action. Are there any expedite communications to be disclosed on these items?
No.
Are there any expedite communications that took place or additional information you learned while visiting these sites to be disclosed?
No.
Move approval, Cor.
Second, Campbell.
Is this just strictly the vote, or is this, can we respond to these?
Right. Before we get to the motion, we need to ask, Shelley, go ahead and ask if anyone-
If I'm wishing to speak on this consent agenda items, if so, please stand and state that item at this time, and we'll remove it for public hearing.
Yes, this is for item Special Permit 2-1-0-5-5. The property located in approximately 27th and 1st Streets. Special liquor permit.
Okay, we will remove that from the consent agenda. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on any item on the agenda, consent agenda? Okay. Now we'll entertain a motion.
Move approval, Cor.
Second, Campbell.
Okay.
Shelley?
Campbell?
Yes.
Cor?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Rodenberg?
Yes.
Ryman Yost?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Motion is approved, 7 to 0.
Okay. I will now ask Shelley to call the request for deferral.
Yes, we have received rewritten communication on behalf of the applicant requesting a two-week deferral until the next Planning Commission hearing of the associated items 4.1A and 4.1B, which is annexation 2-1-0-1-0 to annex approximately 41.99 acres, more or less, on property generally located northeast of South 70th Street and Yankee Hill Road, and associated Change of Zone 2-1-0-5-3, from AG to R-3 PUD, for the market point PUD for up to 120,000 square feet, a commercial floor enough to 464 multiple-family dwelling units with adjustments to the zoning and subdivision ordinances on property generally located northeast of South 70th Street and Yankee Hill Road. This will delay public hearing and action to the January 19th, 2022 Planning Commission hearing.
Okay. Is there a motion for action on this?
Move to defer until January 19th, 2022.
Second, Campbell.
Okay. Shelley?
Campbell?
Yes.
Cor?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Rodenberg?
Yes.
Ryman Yost?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Motion is approved, H-0.
Okay. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on these applications today? There will be opportunity to speak during the public hearing, but if there was anyone here today that wanted to speak, you could certainly do so today. Okay. We will now proceed to public hearings. Prior to staff making a brief presentation, each staff person should state their name, agency, and address. The applicant will then be requested to present his or her testimony, followed by those who wish to testify in support, followed by those who wish to testify in opposition. The staff will then be given an opportunity to respond to the testimony, and then the applicant shall have an opportunity for rebuttal. Each person testifying should state their name and address and shall have five minutes to speak unless additional time is requested and granted. The timer will go off after four minutes. The clerk will then indicate you have one minute remaining to wrap up your testimony. Once the final minute has lapsed, the clerk will indicate that your time is up. If during your testimony you have copies of documents or materials you would like distributed to the Planning Commission members and/or included as part of the record, please provide them to the clerk. The Planning Commission will vote immediately at the close of the public hearing unless the commission votes to defer action or continue the hearing. Shelley, please call the first public hearing item.
Yes, first item will be an item removed from the consent agenda, the 3.1 for the Special Permit 2-1-0-5-5.
Okay. Sorry, I'm going backwards now. Brian?
Yes, good afternoon. Brian Will, complaints, excuse me, by 55 South 10th Street. And so the property we're talking about is South 7th Street, O Street, southwest of the intersection. It's this property located right here. The life of premises would be of a building right at the intersection. So special permit for off-sale alcohol. Sorry, I'm out of breath. I ran. So recall that there's, requires two things to sell alcohol in the city of Lincoln, state of Nebraska liquor license and special permit and zoning ordinance. We have separate special permits for on-sale or off-sale. This one happens to be for off-sale. So as we review the special permit, it met all the criteria, all the conditions of special permit, including the required 100-foot separation from a residence, residential zoning district, daycare, state mental health facility. And so the recommendation is for conditional approval. I think it may have been revisions to the site plan, but so-
Can you remind us what's there right now, Brian?
It's just, it's retail. I, I'm, yeah, I mean, there's no change to the building. It's just a, it's just a change in tenant.
Okay.
So this tenant wants to, by his, by his letter, says 27th Street Liquor and Tobacco is currently open for business, offers a wide variety of tobacco, vape, and CBD products. They'd also like to offer alcohol in addition to these current products and services to improve customer experience. So any application like this, the first thing we do is evaluate it for criteria, particularly the separation, the location criteria. And this one met all of the criteria, and so staff is recommending approval. Be happy to answer any of the questions that you might have.
Brian, in the, in the staff report, there was mention of a childcare facility located-
Mm-hmm.
Is that in the same building, just to the west?
I believe it's, it's, it's to the west. It's here. Yeah, so we measured the separation of that from the licensed premises to that would be the easternmost wall of that, of that use.
And it's already there, the childcare facility? I noticed there was some difference between-
Yes, yes. If it weren't there, if this use comes in first, then, well, you're just coming to the nuisance. But in this case, yes, it is already there, according to building safety and their, their records. So yes, this use coming in has to meet the required separation.
And in general, because this just made me start thinking then about what happens if a special permit for sale of alcohol is approved, and then later a daycare facility or a church or something, one of those protected uses goes in, there's really no effect on the special permit at that point?
No, it, like I said, that, yeah, the risk is then on you. You're sort of coming to the nuisance, so to speak. It could have an impact if they wanted to expand some future date. It may limit expansion depending upon whether it meets all the criteria or not. But otherwise, once they're there, if they don't, don't change, don't modify, they're okay under that special permit.
Thanks. Any other questions for Brian? Okay, thank you. Is the applicant here?
Good afternoon, I'm Nick Glass, on behalf of Beat Winn, the liquor and tobacco retail shop. I believe he's on Zoom. He had asked for permission to appear on Zoom, but I can make a statement on his behalf. So if, if this panel remembers back, this is, I would consider a blighted area, really. It's a little, it was run down, I think during the Black Lives Matter rallies. There were quite a few windows that were broken out. He's now put in a business that is, is open for commerce, producing income, paying taxes. The building is, got windows. I think that it, it's obviously, it's habitable. It, it is separated. There's no way to pass through from his building down to the other buildings, through the other buildings to get to the daycare. So you're not going to have moms and dads going into the daycare and over buying some liquor and then just strolling through the building over to the daycare to pick up their kids. That's certainly not an issue. But it is on a busy corner, and I think that it would be better to have a business there up and running and operating and being successful than, than dilapidated and not. And he happens to be the one who wants to open the business there. I know there may be some pushback from the community in such, such a manner that, you know, the community doesn't want another alcohol and tobacco shop. There's already five or six up and down O Street, but it's O Street. I mean, O Street, you all know, is very busy here in Lincoln. What, what, what someone does with commerce, there's going to be pushback regardless. We, if, if, if there's a new grocery mart that goes in in a couple of years, great, great. But as long as he's, there's lawful business, we encourage that, I think would, would be the, our, our policy. We're asking to approve. I know there may be some, some other members from the community that are going to object, but at the end of the day, it's lawful business. We've met the requirements. We've done everything that we can to, to show that we're here to be productive in, in the community. And I believe Mr. Winn will continue to open up new businesses. And in, in the pandemic, when there are less jobs out there for people, for us to be able to be successful and open a business and employ people is probably a good thing. So we'd ask for your approval.
Questions? Okay, it looks like Mr. Winn is on Zoom. Is that correct? If you can hear me, is there anything you would like to add at this time?
Technology's not always our-
That's right.
But-
We've gotten used to pauses, that's for sure. Can you hear me, sir?
[inaudible]
Okay, is there anything you would like to add to the testimony that's been brought forth right now?
That's all from me.
I think you just hung up. I think I have it here, if this is correct. 1919 Indico Road, Lincoln, Nebraska, 68521.
Yes, that's correct.
That's Mr. Winn. And then mine's 27th and Y. I'm, I have my law office on 27th and Y, Lincoln Lancaster County.
Okay.
So right down the road.
Are there any other questions for the applicant? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there any testimony in support of this application? Testimony in support? Testimony, if there's no neutral testimony, we'll go to testimony in opposition. Yes?
Hi, Jane Sebby, Woods Park Neighborhood Association. This property falls within our neighborhood association. To the best of my knowledge, no one has approached the neighborhood to ask for support on this matter. In an hour's drive yesterday, I don't know if you can see that, am I got it in the right spot?
It just takes a second.
Okay. Four, two, there we go. Can I zoom that out somehow?
There should be a button on the bottom.
Oh, sorry. All right. This is an area from A Street up to Vine Street, from 33rd over to approximately, I went to about 20th Street. In an hour's time, driving, just driving around, I found five or six stores that sell alcohol, and five or six that are selling cigarettes, vape products, CBD, you name it. We have no problem with CBD and vape problem, all that stuff. That's fine. The problem is, as Mr. Glass says, our neighborhood's starting to look blighted. And part of it is because we have a lot of commercial landlords that refuse to fix up their property, refuse to adequately screen their potential tenants. We also have potential tenants who don't adequately do their market research before they decide to open up a building at someplace they managed to get into. This is what I know. This is what I saw driving by. There are more in there, but tell me, is there any other part of Lincoln that any of you drive through that is that saturated with alcohol sales and vaping, tobacco, drug sales? No. So we're objecting to it, just on the grounds that there's, there's already a half a dozen places to get alcohol within walking distance. There's already a half a dozen places to get CBD oil, vape products, tobacco, whatever you want. Most of these have opened up recently, but at least the two of them in Woods Park have been there at least 20 years. And I know there's one right in here that's already closed. Storefront is empty, and there's a for rent sale on it. So I anticipate that most of these businesses are going to go out of business pretty darn quickly, within a year. I want to point out something else. See, using your own documents. Okay, talking about 100, have to be 100 feet away. Okay, this is the property right here we're talking about. This is a residential duplex. This is a residential duplex. This is a daycare center. There's a daycare center over here with Voices of Hope. There's a daycare center over here with the Health 360. Up here is the Center Point Residential Facility for their dual diagnosis clients. We've been here before for several, many times from the neighborhood. We have a lot of halfway houses in the neighborhood. We have a lot, we have, we had the first transitional housing for people exiting prison. We still have that. What we don't have is any kind of regulation that seems to exist anymore to protect the facilities we used to protect. It used to mean something if you had a daycare center. You didn't want anybody selling alcohol near your kids. Well, we got Elliot Elementary School over here. We got Lincoln High down here. Well, okay, we put in, okay, it was, I think it was MP, the one that's north of Lincoln High. It's a commercial establishment. They're well, you know, they're well-established. They have maintained a lot of regulations for the employees. We're not, we haven't had a problem with selling to minors. Same thing elsewhere. Most of them are, it's well-established businesses that have strong criteria for-
One more minute.
Okay, for their, their, their customers and their clients, or their, their staff to make sure nothing happens. Here, we've got a transient motel over here, a walking distance, lot of traffic there. This is not a good place to put yet another sale of alcohol facility in this city. At some point, you just got to stop granting special permits. And especially in my neighborhood, we have fought for 20 years now to clean this place up, only to have Mr. Gams walk in and say, "Well, it's a blanketed neighborhood." And that's pretty darn annoying. So I would request, on behalf of the Neighborhood Association and all the neighbors, that you not grant this special permit. Thank you. Any questions? Do you want to keep these maps?
Yes. Thank you.
Yep.
Any questions? I'm not sure we got your address for the record.
Sorry, 320 South 29th Street. Also, I would like some documentation that there was broken windows at this property. I know there were broken windows at the Easy Go gas station. I don't remember that there were broken, the Black Lives Matter thing was mostly white people, at least at the Easy Go. So let's not blame social movement for vandalism that it didn't have anything to do with. Thank you.
Jane, can you state your last name for me again?
Sebby, S-E-B-B-Y, just like Debbie.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other testimony in opposition? Questions for staff? Brian, I have a question. In, in terms of the special permitting process and how it relates to alcohol and how that connects with the liquor license process as well, you know, they're two separate processes, but in terms of evaluating the number of businesses in a particular area that may sell alcohol, how, how is that reviewed?
Yeah, there is no, there is no limit or criteria standard for concentration. What the standards in the special permit were really designed to do is maintain this separation. That was the inherent protection of the special permits. So in a 27th and O where you've got commercial zoning in, in all directions and up and down O Street and downtown, you're necessarily going to find more commercial activities and more, more business, a more concentration of commercial activities. But so, yeah, there is no, there is no, there is no limit on the number of liquor licenses in the city of Lincoln or special permits for that matter.
What is the, how close is this area to a residential district?
I don't know. It wasn't one of the closest. I think it would be the, I think there's some R-6 to, if this comes up, I think there's some R-6 to, R-6 to the south, I think is what shows up here. But relative, so what this, maybe just for clarity too, what, what this is, this highlights the property that is not the licensed premises. The licensed premise is actually this portion here. And so the, by the special permit, it is that licensed premises that needs to maintain the 100-foot separation to, whoops, sorry, of those protected uses. So, yeah, so to answer your question, R-6, it's, it's a few hundred feet away.
Thank you.
It would be my, it would be my estimate.
Questions for Brian?
I have one. So Jane mentioned that on that map there, the third property south of O Street on the east side is a duplex. So it's okay, I just want to kind of clarify. It's okay to have a duplex even though that zone'd be three.
Well, first floor residential is one of the criteria, but it beats the 100-foot separation to that property. Yeah, so, I mean, these inquiries come in all the time, approximately 120 feet. So inquiry, we, we get inquiries like this, I mean, all, I mean, all the time. And before we get anybody excited about applying for their liquor license or starting the application for their special permit, this is the first thing that we do, both telling them what the separation requirements are, so they can go out and do their investigation. We do that as well. Take a look at, you know, those surrounding land uses, because if you fail this test, you can't even apply for the special permit. And so that's the way essentially they are administered. You don't meet all the criteria, you can't even apply. By the same token, if you meet all of them, and there are, by comparison to your typical special permit, if you meet all of them- special permit, if you meet all of them, there's really not much of a basis for denial of the special permit, so.
Brian, was that a hundred and twenty feet to the R six?
Yes. No, no, no.
Oh, to the duplex, okay.
It's gotta be a couple hundred feet to the R six.
Any other questions for Brian? Thank you.
Okay.
Applicant rebuttal?
I think it's clear that the applicant meets, uh, his burden. He qualifies for the special permit. With all due respect to the, uh, the community, uh, sitting here today, I didn't hear anything, any causal connection between having a liquor store and a tobacco store and the neighborhood not thriving. There's, there was nothing that was said that has a connection that opening a business like this is going to otherwise depreciate this community. So, I would hope that, um, you know, with one of the busiest intersections in Lincoln, a business that's keeping the lights on, employing people here for commerce, that we would approve this application. And, and hopefully, uh, maybe Mr. Nguyen can donate some money back to the community and help it thrive a little bit, so, uh, thank you.
Thank you.
I would move to close the public hearings.
Second, Joy. Shelley.
Campbell.
Yes.
Core.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
Edens.
Yes.
Joy.
Yes.
Rothenberg.
Yes.
Ryman Yost.
Yes.
Ederton.
Yes.
Motion passed eight to zero.
I would move to approve, uh, special permit two one zero five five.
Is there a second?
Second, Rothenberg.
Discussion.
Um, yeah, I, it really comes down to, he's met all the requirements of the special permit and, um, the number of businesses in, that are in the same area, um, it's, it's really a capitalism issue. And, um, it comes down to the fact that those that perform well are gonna survive and the other businesses are going to go away. So I see no reason for us to deny this permit.
Um, I, I agree and I appreciate, um, the neighbors' concerns about, um, this particular permit and, um, the oversaturation of the market in this particular area of town. But as the regulations are written for our special permit process, we can't, that's outside of our purview, we can't rule on that. So, um, like Commissioner Campbell said, the applicant is meeting the requirements, so there's, there's really not much we can do from that perspective right now.
Um, I agree with my fellow commissioners, um, it's a, a land use and a, um, zoning issue that comes in front of us, which, which is why it comes in front of us, um, in addition to the liquor licensing process. Um, and from that perspective, um, it is in compliance with the special permit. Shelley?
Campbell?
Yes.
Core?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Rothenberg?
Yes.
Ryman Yost?
Yes.
Ederton?
Yes.
Motion passed eight to zero.
Sorry. Next?
Um, item, next for public hearing, items four point one A, annexation two one zero one zero, and four one, four point one B, change of zone two one zero five three, have been deferred until January nineteenth. So the next first item for a public hearing is special permit two one zero five three to allow for a residential healthcare facility for up to six persons on property generally located at eighty-four twenty-one Pinedale Court. This is final action. Are there any expedited communications to be disclosed on this application?
Yes. Um, Rothenberg, I received a phone call from, uh, a neighbor, um, and she wished to discuss it. I just merely told her what the, uh, the procedures were to, uh, come to this meeting and if it doesn't, or if it does pass, uh, that she could, uh, take it to the city council. And that, that was it.
Anything else?
Okay, are there any expedited communications that took place or additional information you learned while visiting any of this, any of this site to be disclosed?
No.
Yes.
Uh, before we get started, Steve Hendrickson with the Planning Department, five 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 South Tenth Street. Would like to introduce Ben Callahan, who is our new planner, who will be handling the southwest area. Um, he's been with us since, uh, November, kinda breaking him in before, uh, coming off, uh, down here for Planning Commission. Uh, Ben is a UNL grad and, uh, actually a former historic preservation intern in our office, so we're very glad to have him back. And, uh, this being his, uh, first public hearing, uh, thought we'd start with something simple, but you never know how they're gonna turn out, so. Turn it over to Ben.
All right, thanks, Ben.
Good afternoon, members of the commission. Ben Callahan with the Lincoln Lancaster County Planning Department, five fifty-five South Tenth Street. This request is for a special permit to allow a residential health facility at eighty-four twenty-one Pinedale Court. Shown here on the property map, the location is currently an existing single-family home and zoned R one residential. It is surrounded by R one residential to the north, east and west, Annabut's Ag, H E, Agriculture Zoning to the south. The zoning ordinance allows for properties zoned R one to request a special permit for a residential healthcare facility and occupancy is based on the lot size. This lot shown here would allow up to four occupants and within the special permit provisions allows for the applicant to request a fifty percent increase in the occupancy if the barrier free standards are met. The applicant is requesting this increase, which would allow for a maximum of six occupants. Parking requirements for the site have been reviewed and with the maximum of six occupants and no more than three employees onsite at a time, this location would require four off-street parking spaces. The applicant did submit a proposed parking plan. With anticipation of adding existing parking to the east on the property, still within the property setback, that would allow for two additional spaces. As noted in the staff report, a condition was made to ensure parking area is reviewed for landscape screening to reduce the visibility of headlight glare and visibility of the parking area. Staff did receive letters in opposition to this request. I would like to mention, uh, within the letters, there are comments regarding group homes and if this special permit would allow a group home. Uh, one thing to separate with, within, within the zoning ordinance is that a group home does not require a special permit and is by conditional use. So the group home mentioning within the special permit definition is for fifteen or more individuals. Um, at the time, the applicant stated they'd like to run a memory care facility for up to six individuals at this location.
Questions for Ben?
Okay, Ben, are you ready? Got some tests going on here. You kind of already addressed, um, one of my questions that I was gonna do. I think there's some confusion, um, and, and it's hard, I mean, for someone that's not used to this stuff. So if this special permit is approved, special permits go with the ownership of the, of the house. So if this, you know, didn't work out for this applicant and they sold the house to someone else down the road, if that new owner wanted to, um, have a, a similar facility or do like a, you know, one of those other uses that were mentioned, they'd have to reapply for their own special permit. Is that correct?
This special permit would carry with the land, with the property.
So someone, a different owner could come in and use this as memory care, but it would only be for, for the same type of facility?
Correct, and maximum of six individuals.
Okay. Now, can you clarify for me with the halfway house, um, statement that you made? So are you saying that if they're gonna have more than fifteen, they'd have to have a permit and less than fifteen, they would not have to have a permit to have that use?
Correct, yeah, and, and the zoning ordinance, um, they can apply by a conditional use. So if the, the main conditional use is separation between group homes within the residential districts, so as long as they're under fifteen, um, any residential district, as long as the separation's met, could be a group home.
Okay, great, thank you for clarifying for, for me.
Would they also have to go before building and safety to approve having more than six people in that size of a facility?
They would, they would still have to meet the building and safety standards for, for a home to have that increase, but if, if it was a larger home, for example, they could apply for a conditional use for a group home.
Well, I think you've passed my test. Well, and all of that's completely, um, separate from the D H H S regulations that would be in place for any sort of facility like this.
Correct.
Other questions for Ben? All right, thank you. Okay, applicant testimony?
Hello, my name is Chris Gilli. Uh, my address is three one zero one North a hundred and seventy-seventh Street, actually in Omaha. And, uh, Ben did not disclose he was a rookie. And, uh, I'm a rookie also, so that, that doesn't feel too good for me, but no. Honestly, I, so I've been building businesses for over twenty-five years. I lived in Lincoln all throughout the nineties and the one and only time that I've had to do something like this was nineteen ninety-four, uh, was a co-founder of Champions Fund Center. If some of you have, you know, hopefully fond memories of that. I still have video games that play in the back of my mind in the middle of the night. But, um, like I said, I've been, I've been building and running businesses for twenty-five years. Um, I've gotten to a point, I turn fifty next year, and I've gotten to a point where I now want to transition from investing in returns to investing in impact. And, uh, part of that is in helping enable and empower some of my family members to do things that they're passionate about. And so I have a sister, Katie Hartman, who's back there, who has been in the senior care industry as a nurse, as a nurse manager, uh, as a staffing manager, as managing a company that staffs for senior care in home healthcare for over twenty years. And so she has been in my ear for many, many years about, you know, you need to do something in healthcare. And so I have always said, "Well, tell me something that you're really interested in and maybe at some point that is what we'll do." And, uh, over the last, uh, two years now, we've been working on, you know, this project that we refer to as residential assisted living. And so we've been working with George in city planning and now Ben in city planning. And the, the reality, as, as I've learned in senior care, I've now had two grandmothers that over the years we've had to put, make that tough decision to place in senior care. Both of them unfortunately have, have passed away just in the last two years. But in, in today's environment, primarily, you kinda have two choices when they start to need assisted living. One is they, they stay at home and it costs a lot of money for in-home healthcare as well as maintaining, continuing to maintain the home and that responsibility. Or the other decision is to move them into typically what's more larger institution-like assisted living. And so those are, those are the two kind of very different scenarios. And there's a concept that's been growing over the last ten years across the U.S., uh, which helps bridge the gap in this type of care. And that's called residential assisted living. And, um, and so what it allows you to do is what we're talking about here. And according to the Residential Assisted Living National Association, uh, there are over thirty thousand homes now that have been converted and are operating in the U.S. that provide this service. To my knowledge, nobody is doing this in Lincoln. And so, um, it's, my sister is, is very passionate about that. Again, she's been in the industry for twenty-plus years and we feel like we are qualified to actually be the first ones in Lincoln to provide that service. And I just wanna share a couple of things, a couple of reasons of why we think that is true. The first, I've already alluded to, uh, I've been a proven business builder, business leader for over twenty-five years. Um, I've got a very extensive resume of building, uh, I know how to, I, I build companies, I know how to hire, you know, I know how to work with regulations, you know, a lot of different things and across many, many different industries. Again, my sister has been a nurse, a manager, uh, you know, has, has done many different things in, in senior care, healthcare for over twenty-plus years. We've been working with the Planning Department for nearly, uh, a year and a half on this project. Uh, we have been diligent, we have been consistent, uh, we have tried to be cognizant just of, you know, what is the right fit within this community? We wanna make sure that, that this, especially if this very first one is done right, is done well. We've invested in training. Uh, I've spent over fifteen thousand dollars in sending Katie across the country. We have joined, uh, networks of people that are doing this, that are doing this success, you know, that are, that are doing this in a very positive manner, um, and making sure that she's getting training and ongoing training outside of all of her experience that she's done. We feel like this home and this location actually is a very strong fit within the community. Uh, I've actually been under contract in a couple of different homes, uh, in Lincoln, you know, for this. And so we've had to make some difficult decisions, again, trying to find, this is the smallest home, uh, that we've actually looked at, and so part of the reason for that was, one, it's a custom-built home for somebody with accessibility challenges. It has an elevator inside the home, everything is zero entry, there's, there's no stairs in and out of the home, there's actually poured sidewalk in the backyard. So there's a lot of things that just said, "This, this is the right fit." And also I just, it's very important that the first one is manageable for my sister. She is gonna be the one operating the business, uh, in the home every day. So again, for those reasons, uh, again, we feel like there is a unmet need in the community and, uh, underserved need, what's important, you know, for folks that need senior care. Obviously, every community faces a challenge of, will we have enough beds and will we have enough caretakers in the next five or ten years? This obviously doesn't address this. This isn't a scale issue, but what it does is create options, uh, to fill that gap again, from either staying at home and really not being able to afford that option for long or being moved into a large institution-like setting. And so we would be, we would like to be the first ones, uh, to, to meet that need and bring that service here to the Lincoln community.
Questions?
I've got some for you. So when I was looking at the, at the house on the assessor's site, um, I saw that right now it only has two bedrooms. Will each resident have their own bedroom or is it gonna be sharing or how, how are you gonna go about that?
Yeah, so there's actually four bedrooms in the home, two on the lower level, two on the upper level. So the, the idea would be, uh, two of those would be shared. Again, I think it was already mentioned, uh, we also have to go through the licensing process with the state, uh, and so there's requirements regarding square footage per room. Uh, this, this house far exceeds those requirements in order to do some shared rooms as well.
And so those bedrooms in the basement are conforming, they're not, you know?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, window size, all of that, yes.
So, you've mentioned this will be your first one in Lincoln. I assume that you don't have, you don't have one like in Omaha or anywhere else? This would be your first one?
This is the first for us. Omaha does have, uh, some, some groups that are, that have done this for many, many years. Again, we're part of, of a national organization and, and Katie has gone out and visited, um, several of those homes and have toured those homes and we're in like weekly, you know, communication, uh, with folks that operate these homes very successfully.
Any other questions?
One of the concerns in the written testimony, um, regarded to liability, if, uh, one of the residents wandered off and hurt themselves on their property, um, how will they be monitored to keep that from happening?
Right, so, um, we have, uh, we'll have an access control system, uh, that will help with, obviously, uh, making sure we don't have people that are leaving without attendance. We'll also have, uh, we're looking at like bracelet technology, uh, that will also, so I mean, everything from, uh, the plan is to put fence, there is no fence currently in the backyard. And so one of the requirements with the fence is actually a key code. So all exits, uh, will be protected, uh, to prevent that, um, from happening, all, as well as, I mean, our, our ratio of staff, uh, so we will have, you know, two, two staff there at all times. Um, and so, you know, the ratio that we have in this environment is, is much stronger than you would in a traditional assisted living, which is typically eight to twelve residents per staff member. Uh, you know, we're up- obviously with two people there at all times, and at the most, six residents, you can see what the ratio is.
From experience, I know that's a very good ratio.
Other questions?
The other concern was parking, that was brought up a couple of different times, and I know you have to have so many due to the staff number you're going to have there, but also, we hope these folks get visitors, so that's more parking. You're adding two stalls to the existing?
That's correct.
And is that going to be next to that driveway?
Yes.
On there?
So it'll be, yes, correct. It'll be to the...
So, did they count that as, what's the word I want to look, like double deep, so you have a spot with the car behind it, another spot with the car behind it, and two more spots?
So we're required to add two additional spots, you know?
Are those pull-in spots where they can get to them and back out, or are they going to be, oh, we've got this one blocked in, so visitors are more likely to park on the street?
They will be side-by-side spots. Is what the, is what the, the design is.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. Will take any testimony in support of this application?
Hello, I am Katie Hartman, I am the sister. And do you need to know my address?
If you could share your address, that'd be great.
Yeah, seven, seven eight zero zero North one hundred and thirty-four Street in Waverly. I just want to, to state a couple of things. This is coming out of compassion and my passion to take care of people. We have met with multiple people who place the elderly patients in homes, and they have been so excited to find out that this is going to bring an opportunity to Lincoln that we don't currently have. Our idea is really to, in support of community, as much as we all want to stay in our homes forever, we can't, but this allows a person to stay in a home, that is a home, that truly is within a neighborhood. And our idea is to bring community, to involve community, is my sole desire for this whole idea. It is to, you know, how many people, children grow up even knowing their grandparents or knowing elderly people, and here we're going to bring them into a neighborhood in hopes that there will be some interaction of some sort that we create. So we don't want to do this coming in as a business and overtaking a neighborhood, we certainly want to work with the neighbors and know that this is a community that's coming together and not pulling apart for any reason. I also want to mention that our staff will be parking in the garage, so this, the parking that we are adding, the two stalls on the side, will be for visitors. I will be there the majority of the time, so I actually am another staff person, I would be the number three in the home, on top of the already two that will be there. So I just want, I just wanted to state that as adding two, so, thank you.
Great, any questions? Thank you very much. Any other testimony in support? Is there any neutral testimony? If not, if there's testimony in opposition?
My name is Carol Klaus, my address eighty-four eleven Pinedale Avenue.
Thank you.
My home is next door to the, the house applying for this special permit. I am opposed to this permit for many reasons. It appears that if a permit is required to operate a business, that permit is required for a reason. The permit is there to determine the use of a property and its impact on the adjoining properties and properties in the immediate neighborhood, and the long-term negative ramifications. If the impact of a group home was totally positive, there would be no special permit My husband and I built our home in nineteen seventy-eight. We raised our children there, and our grandchildren have become adults knowing our neighborhood as a family-friendly neighborhood. The cycle is beginning again with young children living and growing up in this quiet residential neighborhood. Many of the children on our street walk to school at Messiah. Traffic down our street is very limited. It is my belief that having a business in our neighborhood will change the entire attitude of our neighborhood, not in a good way. A business, and particularly one with no past favorable track record, seems to open doors to other questionable activities in our neighborhood. As stated in information provided to us by Ben Callahan, this special permit is defined as residential healthcare facility shall mean a building or structure that is to be used in a residential nature, licensed or approved by the state or an appropriate agency if required. Residential healthcare facility could include, but would not be limited to, the following types of facilities: assisted living, nursing care, memory care, convalescent home, hospice home, group home for sixteen or more people and intermediate care, and may include independent living units. While all of the textbook requirements have been met and all blocks checked, which leads the planning staff to recommend approval, the impact on the five homeowners in this area is not slight or insignificant. The entire atmosphere of a neighborhood has changed when a business is transplanted into the area. It seems only logical that the value of properties in our neighborhood will be decreased and marketability will be lessened in having a group home located here. For these reasons, I ask that you deny the special permit.
Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Members of the planning commission, I am Charles Klaus, living at eighty-four eleven Pinedale, next door to the home in question. This special permit recreates a group home in our neighborhood. Our neighborhood consists of five families, one vacant home for sale, two undeveloped lots, and an elementary school in the backyard. We are a small neighborhood. Approval of this permit will allow Harbor Senior Care to establish a residential care facility, but it doesn't limit it to that. In fact, if you read the statutes, you will see that there's not much limit at all to what a group home can become. Could it become a rehab facility for those with addictions, drugs, sex, alcohol, et cetera, without any other city, county approval? There does not appear to be any way, a way to limit the use of this group home to the proposed use by Harbor Senior Care. Their venture is not a charity, this is a for-profit business that will look for additional ways to create income if the initial venture isn't profitable. Harbor Senior Care does not have a track record with this, in fact, this is their first attempt, and they've asked for an initial fifty percent increase in, in number of clients based on the zoning, current zoning, that's, that allows only four. It's another, that increase will impact our neighborhood negatively. Owning residential property is a financial risk for anybody, but there's a different investment when you are homeowner versus an investor. This investor will be absentee, they're not going, neither, neither one live in this community, neither one live in Lincoln, nor will they be living at this home. A new, a homeowner will then, upon, upon potential sale down the road, will have to disclose that they're next door to a group home, that must have a disadvantage price-wise to both the sale price you can get for a home, and maybe the time it would take to sell such a home, not a positive impact. As I ask you to not approve this request, I just ask you to consider whether you would approve this request next door to you. And as you think about that answer, you'll consider the real possibility that in the future, a switch could be made with this home becoming something totally different than what it is being proposed today. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Other testimony in opposition? Okay, staff questions?
I do have one.
Okay, come on up, Ben.
So as I read this, Ben, they need four spaces to meet parking requirements, and so if they, and it's a double stall garage, so two would be there, and then two could be back behind in that driveway, so really, they wouldn't have to add on any additional parking to meet the requirements of the special permit.
Correct, yeah, they are just required to have four with the six individuals and three staff.
Okay, I want to make sure I was interpreting that correctly, thank you. And then I do have one other thing that I noticed, and I want to make sure that I'm looking at this right. On that parking pad that they're going to put in there, in the site conditions, so one point one, it says they have to provide that screen on the north and west sides, should it be east?
Should be east, yeah.
So I think that maybe should be corrected before we make sure that everyone's on the same page for that one.
Ben, the, we have the, the plan that will add the parking spots on the side of the home, there are, are there, am I correct that there are no other changes, physical changes to the house?
Yes, to my knowledge, the applicant's not changing the home at all, it'll just be adding the parking space.
Okay. Any other questions for Ben? Thank you. Applicant rebuttal?
Obviously, I, I know anytime, anytime there's unknown, it creates fear, and, and I understand that, again, this has been a, a year and a half, really two-year process for us, trying to be very consciously aware of that scenario, and, you know, again, this is a, this is a concept in assisted living that is coming across the country, I think every, every community has to address, you know, how are, how are we going to, to handle that in the community? And so again, it's our intention, we, we feel very passionate about this, and that we want to bring this into Lincoln. And again, we've got, we've got some support from a lot of people in the assisted living space. I closed on this house on Friday, and I know, you know, one of the contentions is, hey, it's a small neighborhood, and it's, you know, it's going to bring additional traffic. I have a family of seven children, and I, ranging from the ages of nine to twenty-two, but six of them are driving age. And so, I, anywhere I go, I raise that, I'm going to raise that same scenario. We have a pool in our backyard, and so every other night on a sun, in the summertime, triple that amount of cars, you know, and so I understand that. And so, you know, we've had some communication, and, and I, I hate even the fact that we're being referred to as a business, but it has to be that way. But our intention is to run this as a home, not as a group home, in fact, I went back and forth with, with planning for, I mean, for quite some time, to really try to distinguish what is this as it meets the codes within the city. And so it's a residential healthcare facility, and we want to run it as a home within that community. And, and my sister is, she lives in Waverly, but her everyday life is in Lincoln, this is where, where she has worked, and all of that. So that is, that is our intention, and again, I think the biggest fear that I a hundred percent get is just if there is some loophole, as far as what happens if I no longer own this house? And, and I have offered to the neighbors, or, or through the Klauses, that I am, I am a hundred percent willing to limit my ability to even sell beyond either the current use that we're asking for, or back to single-family residence. I am, even though this is a for-profit business, I am not going to make any mon, like, I've run the numbers, I'm going to lose money on this. This is about doing this right and trying to prove out a model, if it works. And so I'm not in this for money, I am, I am strong financially, I'm not worried about losing money on this, I wanted, I want to help enable my sister and her dream, and I want to make sure I'm taking care of the fear of, of the neighbors. And so I am completely open if there's any way to limit my ability to, to ever sell this property in the future, outside of this specific intended use, or back to single-family residence. And I, I'm not sure all of the, of the conditions of how that would work, but I have already offered that to them, and I just wanted to communicate to that, to, to this group as well.
Mr. Gilli, if your, if this special permit is approved, what's the process after, after that, in terms of getting the business up and running?
Yes, so there are some things we have to meet in regards to building and safety, so for example, the house needs to be fire suppression and sprinkled, so I'm already working with a local vendor on that, the fencing, so there's certain things that we have to have installed within the home, but we also, we'll, we can move forward with the licensing process with the Department of Health and Human Services. And so that likely will take sixteen to ninety days, assuming no obstacles to get through that as well. So our intention has been, from a timeline standpoint, to be, you know, hopefully operating in, in the April timeframe.
Any other questions?
Would it be fair to say, I'm struggling on how to word this question, that your goal with this is, I'm trying not to lead you, but I don't know how to say it without leading you, I don't think anyone's going to really know that this is, you know, that you, that you have a facility in here, I think that anyone just driving by or in the neighborhood will just, it'll be just like having another neighbor. Is that fair to say, or what's your?
That is, yes, it is fair to say, I mean, that is our intention, the people in our home are going to be homebound, you know, they're, they're not able to drive vehicles, you know, it's why we like the setup of the backyard, because if they want to, you know, get out and get a little exercise, there's literally a sidewalk path in the backyard. So I think for, we're not putting signage out front, I mean, it is going to look like every other house in the neighborhood, and we'll be completely committed to maintaining the home.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
I have a question for Steve. The applicant is willing to restrict the use to what is being proposed, even though it could possibly be reverted to another use under the special permit. When I purchased the Walton Trail Company, which formerly was Willie's Tavern in the town of Walton, the neighbor who had purchased the tavern strictly to close it down, was only willing to sell it to me if I, if we put a deed restriction on it, that I would not get a liquor license and sell alcohol. Is it possible to put some sort of deed restriction on this property, that it will remain a healthcare facility, or revert back to single-family residence?
I'll have Tim C. join us. While he's coming up, one, we would, our department and the city attorneys would not recommend you limit the special permit to any particular type of subset of a residential healthcare facility. The residential healthcare facility, in our view, and, and Tim shares this as well, is that you're allowing a residential healthcare facility, the kinds of persons inside, whether it's a hospice, or memory care, or convalescent home, that's just the activity that goes inside, that's not your regulation and review, your review is, does that change the traffic pattern, does that change the parking? And, and depending on the use, there might be a few more stalls required, and we would look at that at the, internally, it went to, let's say, a convalescent home, which is another type of residential healthcare facility, versus an assisted living, they have different parking requirements, but the impact overall is, is pretty much... They have different parking requirements, but the impact overall is, is pretty much the same. So, no, we wouldn't recommend, as a condition of the special permit, that there be any further limitations put on the residential healthcare facility. And I'll have Tim add to that as well.
Yeah, Tim C., Assistant City Attorney, I don't disagree with anything Steve said. What you have in front of you is a residential healthcare facility. That is a term that has a non-exclusive list of examples in the definition of it, but those, those are not individual uses in and of themselves. What is before you, what is in the zoning code is a residential healthcare facility. So that's, that's question one. With respect to the deed restrictions, that would be something outside of the city's authority to impose in this. This is, that would be a transaction, that would be something in the sale or something for the benefit of a neighborhood or neighbor, but not something that the city is in, in the business of enforcing.
However, I'm sorry, however, in terms of the current zoning and the specific zoning for the special permit, right now, we're talking about four to six, a maximum of four to six, unless you were somehow able to transform the physical house in a significant manner to increase occupancy space, et cetera. So the likelihood of this residential assisted living space becoming a group home for 15 wayward youth or whatever is, from a practical standpoint, unlikely. Also, given the fact that it is a residential assisted living facility for old folks, my sense is that you're not gonna have keggers on a, on a Thursday night, nor are we going to necessarily see a whole lot of traffic disruption. People will be visiting their parent or elderly friend. That's no different than a neighbor coming over from the other side of town, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah. Zoning-wise, we would have to change.
This special permit is limited to six people.
Right.
So six people is the limitation. And just to explain a little bit the process, this special permit continues with the land, so the next person would still have this facility. If at some point somebody said, you know, I don't want to use this special permit, I want to do something different, we do have the ability to rescind a special permit. So a special permit can be rescinded administratively, and the new person could come in and say, well, a group home is a conditional use, and I can have 15 or fewer people in my group home as a conditional use if I meet the separation requirement, and we confirmed this one does. So the, any house actually in this block has that option to go to a group home facility today, as long as it meets the spacing requirement, which as of this moment, they do. But yes, this is special permit for six. If they decided, you know, this is going well, but we want to go to 10 or to 12, they'd have to come back through you again. And if that means an addition to the house, then they'd have to show how they have, do an addition to the house.
Any other questions?
Yes, but my question is, I think we have to open up, let the applicant have a rebuttal now that we've let staff come back.
Yeah, they haven't had their normal rebuttal yet anyhow.
Okay. Thank you. Applicant, you have anything else you want to add?
Just one thing to clarify on that. From my understanding, the number of people that we can have within the, the home is actually based on the, the outside, external square footage of the property. So even if we added to the home, while, while that affects the regulations through the state from an assisted living requirements, we actually cannot go beyond what would be six for this particular property, so.
Thank you.
I would move that we close the public hearing.
Second, Core. Shelley.
Campbell.
Yes.
Core.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
Edens.
Yes.
Joy.
Yes.
Roenberg.
Yes.
Reiman Yost.
Yes.
Ederton.
Yes.
Motion passed eight to zero.
I would move that we approve special permit 21053.
Second, Core. Discussion.
This is, I think, a very legitimate use, and I, I agree with Maribel that these are going to be elderly people, they aren't gonna be out wandering the neighborhood, they're not gonna be having keggers, as you mentioned. And I, having had a mother that had Alzheimer's for 20 years and lived at home, there is a need for this kind of a facility, so I will be strongly supporting this.
I, I too will support this. We desperately need these type of facilities in everywhere. But I'm not approving this just because we need this type of living situation for, for people. The question was asked, would I approve this if this were right next to my house? For sure, I would. These would be great neighbors, because you have more protections than you do with a normal neighbor in this situation. You have people that are gonna be held accountable if their property isn't, you know, up to snuff or if there's little things going on. I think they're gonna be great neighbors. I, I would love to have something like that next to me, but I don't, I don't have a house next to me that's big enough for something like that, so I, I support this, and I think it'll be a great project.
I concur with both of my colleagues. For the record, I'm a psychologist by training, and I spend a lot of time with people who have neurological issues. And one of the best things we can do for individuals with dementia, with memory care issues, is to provide a sense of stable home, a home life, to the extent that you can create that. It, it absolutely improves the quality of life. I would love to have this facility as a neighbor. I mean, and frankly, the closer I get to being a resident, one of these types of facilities, I hope more and more of them are open. And it does, I believe, add to the diversity of the city of Lincoln, and it certainly allows us to keep the residents of Lincoln who have given so much to this community, keep them close by.
I'm a strong believer in the least restrictive environment possible for every individual. I was a foster parent for many years, up to eight teenage kids at one time, so, yep, we have cars, we have everything parking outside our house. And I love to hook those teenagers up that have lived in, I don't even want to count how many different homes, with the seniors that have been in our neighborhood for generations. And I'm really excited to approve this.
Shelley.
All right. Campbell.
Yes.
Core.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
Edens.
Yes.
Joy.
Yes.
Roenberg.
Yes.
Reiman Yost.
Yes.
Ederton.
Yes.
Motion passed eight to zero.
Okay. Go on, Shelley.
Okay, we will now go to annexation, or item 5.1A, annexation 21009, to annex approximately 13.59 acres, more or less, associated with change of zone 21051 from AG to R4, and associated with item 5.1C, special permit 21050 to allow for a CUP for up to 128 dwelling units with associated waivers to set back requirements. All our property generally located at South Folsom Street and West Old Chaney Road. This special permit, though, is final action. Are there any expertise communications to be disclosed on this application?
No.
Are there any expertise communications that took place or additional information you learned while visiting any of this site to be disclosed?
No. Brian.
Good afternoon again, Brian Will, Plating Department. You know, thinking about having to do over, perhaps, these items may have been actually on the consent agenda. I think probably originally we were maybe anticipating, you know, comments from neighbors in the area, or perhaps opposition from the applicant in the staff report. Actually, I haven't seen either one of those things here today, so, but I'll, I'll go through each one of these sort of briefly. The applicant's here and can dispute my statement about not disagreeing with the report or not here today. So there's three related items. The applicant is Lincoln Housing Authority, and this property is located northwest of the intersection of West Old Chaney Road and South Folsom Street. The three applications, annexation, change of zone, and then a special permit for a community unit plan for up to 128 dwelling units. The site's approximately 13 and a half acres in area and currently zoned AG. So let me maybe start at the beginning of it with the annexation. And so what I'm gonna try to zoom in here a bit on. So, Plating Department is recommending approval of the annexation, and the rationale for that is partly in this map. This dash line here, future service limits, the property we're talking about is located right about here at the tip of my pen. And so you see that it lies inside the city's future service limit. It's also identified as Tier One Priority B, meaning it, area, land within that area would be, would be annexed after Tier One Priority A, unless utilities and facilities and everything is there today, which is in fact what we find here. The property, just immediately adjacent to the south, has already been annexed, so this property, sorry, immediately adjacent to the south property has already been annexed, so is contiguous to the city limit. All the city utilities are in the area and available, and the full range of city services can be provided to this property. So meets the city's annexation policy as stated in the comprehensive plan, and so Plating Department is recommending approval of the annexation. The change of zone from AG to R4 to then allow for the special permit for community unit plan. So unfortunately, a lot of the underlying layers didn't show up here, but that's okay. I think I can show you, I think I can locate you on the map. So here's West Old Chaney Road here, subject property is outlined in red. This is South Folsom. I'm just showing you this because I want to show you the future land use map from the comprehensive plan. All of this in yellow here is designated for future urban residential land use, okay? So the proposed R4 zoning is certainly consistent with that and allows a range of uses that is, that are, range of uses that is consistent with this land use designation. So for the change of zone from AG to R4, we also find that that is consistent with the comprehensive plan, and we're recommending approval of that as well. So the last item, then, the special permit for the community unit plan. This is a conceptual, and it's listed, it's identified as such, is a conceptual site plan. It's conceptual because all of the detail isn't available yet. What the applicant is asking for is that these applications will be allowed to move through the process and hopefully gain approval from Plating Commission and City Council so that at a later date, they can come back and provide detail for this site to the city of Lincoln. We're proposing by administrative amendment so they can move forward building permits. So the special permit, what we're suggesting in this case, it is for 128 dwelling units, 104 of those are multifamily, the remainder are attached, single-family. Because as we look at the site plan in general, it works. What we've had discussions about are the access points onto both South Folsom and the West Old Chaney. The internal layout, I don't, I don't think there's really, I don't think there's really much disagreement or issue there. I think it's primarily location of the access points. And there's also an issue that I'll talk about in a second, which is a setback along the west property line. Because they have submitted this conceptual plan and are asking essentially for an overview approval to be followed up later, if the detail be approved by administrative amendment, we're suggesting that this plan essentially be revised and just delete this internal detail that is being shown at this point. What we do want to show, though, however, are the location of the access points and the overall density calculation, and it shows that these, the number of units that are proposed are allowed in this development. I would note that the access point on the West Old Chaney Road does require an approved deviation request. That has not been, I don't know whether it's been submitted or not, the applicant can maybe speak to that, but I'm pretty sure it has not been approved. So one of the points, or one of the conditions of approval is that this access point be shown, but that its final location will be subject to approval of that deviation request. There were two waivers that were requested. One of them was to adjust internal setbacks to zero, and when we have a, essentially, a self-contained unified development like this, there's really not an issue with doing that. It's setback to their own buildings. So we are supporting that setback adjustment to zero for the internal setbacks. The other one, and the one that I sent you the memo on today, relates to a requested setback waiver along the west property line from 20 feet down to 15 feet. Originally, we'd written that kind of in terms that if the adjacent neighbor is okay with it, then we'd recommend approval of it. Well, I, our city attorney's office just sort of reminded us, it's probably not the best way to do it, and really, the Plating Commission should be approving or denying that waiver. So I did revise the conditions of approval and recommending denial of that waiver at this time. So recommending approval of the waiver, internal setbacks, denial of the waiver of the setback along the west property line. Should they decide at a later date that they need that, if you follow through with that denial, they would not be precluded from coming back at some future date and applying for that waiver at that point in time. So, subject to the recommended conditions of approval as modified, the Plating Department is also recommending approval of special permit for the CUP. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions for Brian. Dick?
Brian, put that, back that third exhibit, the preliminary, do you have any, and you may not be able to answer this, it may be what the applicant, but is, do you know what the distance on the west side from the back of those units to the property line is?
From the back of these structures?
Yeah.
To the property line?
Right.
I don't know that, I don't know that distance. It's more than 15 feet.
Yeah, that's what it appeared to be.
Exactly, yeah. It appears to be closer to 30 feet, but.
Yeah, that's, I, I just think it, if they stick to the preliminary plan, it wouldn't matter.
It looks like there's enough room.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Other questions for Brian?
Brian, I'm not sure if you're gonna know this, in the applicant's letter, they mention, they say the housing authority contemplates a subdivision separating the parcel in two phases will be required. Are they really meaning like lots? Is that what they're?
Yeah, 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 I think that's the intent, that eventually there will be a final plat coming that, as we look at this plan here, I think that it's gonna be subdivided into two. Now, the applicant can confirm that, but that's, that's my understanding, eventually it's gonna be, there's gonna be more than one lot, but will require, will require a final plat to do that.
That subdivision word was just kind of throwing me off there for a minute. Okay, thank you.
Anything else for Brian?
Anything else for Brian?
Madam Chair, members of the commission, my name is Tom Houston. My address is 233 South 13th Street, Suite 1900 here in Lincoln. On behalf of the Housing Authority of the City of Lincoln, with me today is Chris Lambert, who's the Executive Director of the Housing Authority, Thomas Judds, who's the Planning and Development Manager of the Housing Authority, and also Rob Duval, with Sherman Associates, part of our engineering design team. Answer more questions that you may have. I hate to disappoint Brian, but I really don't disagree with the staff report. I wanted to lead with that. The Housing Authority has been developing affordable housing for a century or more. And in the last 30 years, has been developing low-income housing tax credit developments, starting with the new construction development located approximately 20th and Pine Lake Road down in, you know, before that area was being developed, the Housing Authority built a Woodbridge project. There's a second new construction development called the Summer Hill Development. It was a couple blocks south of 56th and Pine Lake Road. A very nice low-income housing tax credit development of townhomes. Approximately a decade ago, at 33 Yankee Hill Road, the Prairie Crossing development was constructed. And we've been looking for another site for another low-income housing tax credit development. And because of the fact that the southwest, southwest area of Lincoln is really designated as one of the growth areas, we've been focusing on this site. This site was acquired approximately two years ago by the Housing Authority, and the Lincoln Housing Authority really envisions that an application for low-income housing tax credits will be submitted this year, and the deadline is March. And that's why we have structured the application that's in front of you, as we have. I agree with Brian on the three items on your agenda. Clearly, this site is capable of being annexed. It has all municipal services, and that's, meets all the criteria for the city of Lincoln for annexation and the delivery of municipal services to the site. The water mains closed, the sanitary sewer lines available, this residential development to the south. One of the conditions for approval of the annexation is the formation of an annexation agreement. We have a draft, and we will provide it to the city this week. It's a pretty simple annexation agreement, which is fine. Simple's good. I don't have any problem with having a simple annexation agreement, but I think we'll be able to meet that condition. The change of zone from the AG district to the R4, yeah, we will need a change of zone, but as Brian noted, the new comprehensive plan does show this is an urban residential site, and the zoning designation from R4 is consistent with that comprehensive plan designation. The big issue really is the community unit plan, the special permit, and the staff report requires the Housing Authority to remove all the detail from that conceptual site plan. And the one that you have in front of you is really the site plan that addresses two issues. It addresses the access points on South Folsom Street. There's one on the north, there's one approximately midway. And we have moved this access point on Old Chaney Road further to the west. It was approximately midpoint of that property, but it's moved further to the west to avoid with any conflict of a potential future roundabout at that intersection. And that will require, it does not strictly comply with the access management policy, but I think we agree with the staff that there is support for that. So, we do have a deviation request prepared, and we'll get that submitted. The other thing that I will point out is that what this generic plan does show is the density. And in our four zone, under the community unit plan standards, does allow 13.93 dwelling units per acre, which would permit 190 dwelling units on the site. Well, we're asking for about two-thirds of that. It's 128 units. And if we could develop it in one action, it'd be much more efficient for everybody. It'd be more efficient for us. Unfortunately, the funding programs don't permit that. So, we have to break it into two. So, we're going to have 64 units. That's our plan right now, 64 units per phase. And that's why we have to subdivide it, because we'll have to have two separate ownerships because of the ultimate syndication of the low-income housing tax credits. And so, we're trying to comply with federal and state and local regulations in pursuing the development. Because that site plan is so boring, we did have...
Boring is good, just like simple is good.
Yeah, yeah, simple is good. I did want to show you this, the more colorized version. That does show the access points, including the one that's been relocated to the west. It's a mixture of townhomes that are located on the western border. This development was, it's going to be patterned similar to the Prairie Crossing development. That is a mixture of townhomes with primarily one-bedroom bedrooms and the apartment structures for the 64 units for each phase. The, clearly, where the, the community unit plan requirements for density, we meet all of those. I, I'm confident that, and our end goal is to get the approval of the change of zone, the, the annexation, and the community unit plan, which will allow us to make the application with the Nebraska Investment Finance Authority for the tax credits. And then, we can come back out and fill in all the details dealing with the grading and drainage and the final landscape. And Brian did send you an additional memo about the waiver on the west side. We filed the application or included the waiver in our letter because those townhomes have a western exposure on the backside. And the patio is on the backside. We're thinking they may need to be covered because of the sun exposure. And if, if we're going to have covered, that constitutes a structure that would potentially encroach into the backyard. So, we don't know if we need it yet. And if we do need it, I'll have to come back and amend the special permit, but I think that's an issue that we can deal with down the road once we get past the application phase. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. It's a great development, and we need to move forward, so.
Questions for Tom. Dick?
Can you explain, it's just weird to me, but can you explain why it's not just a rectangle? That the property is, has the curvature there at the northwest?
Yeah. I think it's primarily based upon some internal roads. LPS acquired a site right over here for an elementary school, and I know a street system was really envisioned to provide access, multiple access points into the elementary school. And we bought this property from the developer that also sold the site to the elementary school. And so, they had a vision of how that street system would operate, and that's why there's this curved street.
I have some questions about the timing deadlines. So, in the staff report, it just said, "Established early next year." And so, I wasn't sure if that meant 2022 or 2023.
2022.
Okay. That's what I thought, but I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah. And the application will be for the first 64 units. I would imagine, hopefully, the 2023 application cycle can accommodate another application at that point.
So, when you were talking before about your application deadline?
Yes.
That was this, you said March, right?
Yeah, mid-March of 2022 is our application deadline. And it's a very competitive process for the low-income housing tax credit tool, and we get additional points in the scoring system if the special permits approved, the annexations approved, and the change of zone is approved.
Other questions for Tom? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any testimony in support? There's no neutral testimony. Is there any? Yeah, please. Come all the way up to the, to the front, please.
You don't have to forgive me, I'm always a little nervous at these things. My name is Lori Brunner, B-R-U-N-N-E-R. I'm one of the aforementioned neighbors at 5500 South Folsom Street, Lincoln, Nebraska. Can we turn this map on, please? Okay, I want to point out my home right here. And I want to thank, and I'm carefully being neutral here, not saying yea or nay, but I do want to thank the Lincoln Housing Authority for having neighborhood meeting for us last night. Excuse me, they answered a lot of questions, and it was very helpful. A couple of quick comments. The, you'll notice, along South Folsom here, they've done a beautiful job, in my opinion, of doing landscaping. And when you remember where my house is, that's what we're going to look at, are those trees. And I really appreciate that. So, I would be supportive of granting the waiver on the west side of the property to shift the whole subdivision to the west slightly so there's room for that landscaping. The, my main question to you folks is, part of the annexation states that the right-of-way on Folsom Street will be annexed. I don't know whether that is the west side or both of the rights-of-way. It's not clear on the diagrams. This shows the sidewalk and presumably bike lane going on the west side of Folsom. If that traffic is indeed going to be as high as anticipated, is there going to be widening of Folsom? Is there going to be a bike lane on the other side? These are the questions that I would really like to get an answer to. In general, again, this is a lovely design. We look forward to having good neighbors. It's a quiet area, and I think this is as good a proposal as, as anybody could put together, so. Any questions for me?
I, I do, I want to make sure. So, right now, you are not annexed. You are not inside the city of Lincoln limits.
That's correct, yeah. If you go back to the previous map, excuse me, the subdivision on the south, that is, my understanding is that's all going to be annexed, and that'll be single, maybe two-family homes there. And then, you can kind of see the outline of the school area here. It's kind of a wedge shape. But currently, this is outside the city limits, and we are to the north. This is where the Optimus bald fields are, right in this area, and then the church. So, but I understand developers have already contacted Prairie Princess here. It's just a matter of time before all of that gets developed, so. And we understand that, we understood it when we bought the property. So, I'm assuming someday, the neighbors will have to deal with my crowing rooster.
First-world problems.
Anything else?
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony. Okay, I'm assuming there's no testimony in opposition. Any other questions for staff?
Yes, can we maybe get an answer to some of her questions? So, the, the right-of-way on South Folsom Street, will it be both sides?
By the way, in my defense, I wrote that report last year.
I figured, that's why I was like...
It's dated sometime in December. Yeah, so it's, it's, yes, by state law, we annex all of the adjacent right-of-way. It's all of them, side to side.
And then, she wanted to know about the bike lane, and that will just be on this, on the development side, not on her side?
Yes, the bike trail is planned, at least my last conversation with Parks and Recreation, on the west side of South Folsom Street.
And then, I think she had one other question, but I didn't get that written down. Does anyone else remember that one?
Future expansion of that road, if it was going to need to be four lanes?
I mean, yeah, I mean, it's, yes, eventually, South Folsom will be improved to some form of arterial street status. West Old Chaney Road, its status is less certain at this point. It's still being discussed. I think just what its future status will be. But South Folsom, I think it's pretty safe to say. I believe it's shown as a arterial street in the access management policy in the comprehensive plan, so it'll be improved at some point.
Great, thank you for answering those questions.
Any other questions for Brian? Okay, thank you. Applicant rebuttal? Anything else you want to add?
No need.
Okay, thank you.
I would move that we close the public hearing. Campbell?
Second, Joy.
Shelley?
Campbell?
Yes.
Cor?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Rodenberg?
Yes.
Raymond Yost?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Motion passed, eight to zero.
I would move that we approve annexation 21009.
Second, Joy. Discussion.
I would just, for all three of these, just want to say how excited I am to vote for this and I'm excited that it's happening, both professionally and personally. I've had involvement with Lincoln Housing Authority in specifically the Summer Hill development. Those properties are beautiful. They're quality facilities, the professional personnel. It's, but the waiting list for folks is incredibly long. And anything we can do to create more quality, affordable housing? If you probably, if you're not familiar with them, you've probably driven by several of the Lincoln Housing Authority properties and had no idea that they were a low-income housing development. So, I am thrilled to support all three of these items and excited for this to happen, so thank you for your work on it.
Dick?
Having two of the properties that were mentioned are very close to us. I totally agree. They blend right in. They're built for long-term success and survival. And I agree that probably most of the community does not realize that they have a low-income housing label.
Brian, I just have one question. Do we need to do anything to ensure that your memo, that, that the change in the conditions is part of it going forward? Or is it just as approved, we're, we're good to go?
No, it, it does modify the conditions, so I think you need to, well, if you want to, if you want to accept that recommendation, then I think you need to make it to the conditions as they were.
As revised by the staff memo dated January 5th?
Yes.
On the special permit, Brian?
Just on the special permit?
Yeah.
Got it. Okay. I just wanted to clarify that before we went too far. Tracy?
I, I think this is very appropriate for annexation, and the change of zone, I think, is, is right in line. The only thing I want to kind of get on the record in saying is that I'm, I'm not typically a big fan of approving the plan, yes, the special permit before we have this detail. But I understand in this situation why it's necessary, and I think that their track record shows that, you know, we'll be just fine in this case. And so, that's kind of alleviates some of my qualms about it.
Yep, great point, Tracy. I think that this is an exciting project. It's a very quality organization in our community that's done so much to improve the housing, housing stock. I think that we are doing a lot by, by the terms of our comprehensive plan to ensure that affordable housing will be available throughout our community. And I will vote to support it as well. Shelley?
Okay, Campbell?
Ah, yes.
Cor?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Rodenberg?
Yes.
Raymond Yost?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Motion has passed to approve, eight to zero.
I'd move to approve change of zone 21051.
Second, Joy.
Shelley?
Campbell?
Yes.
Cor?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Rodenberg?
Yes.
Raymond Yost?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Motion passed, eight to zero.
And I would move to approve special permit 21050 with the modified condition from the planning department.
Second, Joy.
Shelley?
Campbell?
Yes.
Cor?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Rodenberg?
Yes.
Raymond Yost?
Yes.
Edgerton, motion passed, eight to zero.
At this time, anyone wishing to speak on an item not on the agenda may do so. Seeing none, I take a motion for adjournment.
Move to adjourn, Cor?
Second, Campbell.
Shelley? Campbell?
Yes.
Cor?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Rodenberg?
Yes.
Raymond Yost?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn.
We are adjourned, thank you.